You have a stamp for the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Fantastic. Welcome to everybody. Have a roll call.
Mayor Hassler.
Here.
Alderman Griminger.
Here.
Alderman Mooney.
Here.
Alderman Donovan.
Mayor.
Alderman Jokers.
Here.
Alderman Hook.
Here.
Alderman Stupi.
Here.
Alderman Prince.
Here.
Alderman Ruzika.
Here.
Mayor, we have a quorum.
Very good, very good. You want to look at your agenda?
Yeah. Mayor, may I say something? Okay. I have an objection to the agenda as presented in regards to Bill Number 4169 with regards to the fire truck. I'll go on record saying I'm for the fire truck and I'm for proceeding, but it's my opinion that it's -- we're premature in voting on this at this point. We still don't have, in my opinion, definitive legal approval that we can legally do that, even though it's been said. I would like to see -- I would feel more comfortable if we had something in writing. Secondly, to my knowledge, we don't have the numbers back from the core, which really we need the numbers from the core, don't we, so we know how much money we have available to do this? Wasn't that the plan?
The issue was to leave enough money in the account to cover future match against work that the core may do.
Right.
And we don't know what the elements of work are until they produce their final report.
Right. So we wouldn't know what we're left with.
We only know what they told us at the last meeting.
Right. I would like to see that item table until we have more info. Definitive.
When it comes on the agenda, then you would move to take.
Okay. All right. Okay, well then.
Table and have a first reading die out for lack of.
Either way.
I can't hear what he's saying.
He was saying you either table it or read it, the first reading, and then let it die natural death. You don't get a second reading.
Okay. All right. So we'll do that. I can motion for that when we get there.
I think the better advice would be to make a motion to take.
Okay. All right. That's all I have.
Motion, I second it.
No. It's with the time.
Okay. So move to approve then.
Second.
Will we go? Are we doing now?
No. Approving the agenda.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, very good. Martin, can I ask your report?
You may. There's been a lot of talk about the -- years ago, we declared the tower, the old communications tower at Fairgrounds, as surplus property. And before we took it down, we wanted to find out if there's anybody interested in it. And we never did dispose of it. It is surplus property by a vote of the board. And we were told that we needed to take it down, so we got bids. And Ryan Martinelli came up with the best bid, not the lowest bid. But he's a licensed contractor in the city. We know he's got insurance. And he's going to take it down the proper way. The low bid was just to try and let it fall, which didn't seem like a good plan.
Let's hook a truck up to the bulldozer.
I reported to you about our discussions with the county assessor over the taxing on the people lease. There's a provision in the state law that allows the assessor to tax a lease if it's below market value with a governmental entity, which she has done. Former Mayor Griminger and I had a meeting with her, discussed it. She was going to look into some things. She finally called us and said, "Ready to talk?" We went back to talk to her, and she lowered the assessment. And within a range that Alderman Griminger thought was reasonable as compared to how it would have been taxed, it was just taxed on a cost basis. So that was a good compromise. The list before you is a culmination of our work session where we talked about roads Explains what the costs are of options when we're removing the street and replacing it with asphalt versus concrete, in the case of Audubon, and the same thing with regard to Seventh Street. The other are the things we talked about for asphalt overlays. And then, at the bottom, you'll see an explanation of where the funds would come from. We have the $200,000 in our regular general fund, and then whatever we needed above the $200,000, we were talking about using the capital improvement fund to pay for. This is just a -- this is basically a policy decision. I will add, one thing that is not on there is that if you wanted to overlay that section of Fourth Street between Market and Jefferson, where it's kind of corduroy because of using the Dura Seal, well, it's not in bad condition, as Alderman Mooney pointed out. The cost of that would be $22,700 estimate. So the question of the day is, do you want to do any of it? All of it? None of it?
This, I mean, this goes along with the decision on the fire truck until we get more clarification. I don't think we should move.
Well, I have a written opinion that came in today, which I emailed, because it just came in today, and it didn't have an opportunity to get it to you, from the attorney relative to the question of whether the capital improvement fund can be used for -- what it can be used for. And his answer, again, affirmatively was, it can be used for any capital item.
Who was that attorney?
That's Mark Grimm with Gilmore Bell. They're the bond attorney that did the ordinance and ballot that converted the levy fund to a capital improvement fund.
Okay.
And they think these expenditures are consistent with that vote and even emailed me copies of the two -- the resolution in the ballot language.
Were they involved in the tip thing?
No.
They didn't have any input on that?
That was Armstrong T. Sale.
And what is this attorney's expertise in?
There are probably four attorneys in the Midwest who can do municipal bond work, and they're one of them. Armstrong T. Sale is one of them. There's a Kansas City firm, and a Chicago firm. There's no legal restriction, but of any attorney doing it, but you can't perform services that are outside your field of your expertise. And these are the experts.
So, okay. Then where -- and this, again, ties in with what we're talking about. When, it's kind of, when do we think we're going to have an answer out of the core as far as what we have to work?
Last time I asked that question, he said their budget year ends when ours does, and that he would have it before the end of the fiscal year. So that means we're going to have to hear about it by September.
Okay.
He couldn't, didn't give me a more definitive date.
Well, again, I kind of feel the same way with this. I think it would be prudent for us, we can't bankrupt ourselves, we need to know exactly what we have to work with before we can really make an intelligent decision on what we're going to spend, don't we?
So wasn't the estimates that they came back with were extremely lower than what the original estimates were for the original project?
Based on what we were verbally told at the meeting. Without having a specific dollar amount, yeah, it was a lot less than it was more. But I don't, I can't, I want to state the figure, because I don't recall being given one.
It still needs to be on paper.
I couldn't agree more.
Everything needs to be on paper.
Yeah. We've got to know what we have to work with.
But what about the other improvements that we were talking about? The levy hiking trail?
That's all part of that core, isn't it? That's all part of the core plan.
Not just the flood mitigation?
No, flood mitigation and levy trail.
So if the core says, you know, we're going to do X amount of work, and we've got to, we have to have 50% of this cost, the flood mitigation, or 25%, and 50% of the recreation. And they get that final report, the work elements will be in there, in the cost estimates. And what we're asking is for permission to spend the money today to do the projects that we think would benefit the citizens, not wait for the core to get money sometime in the unknown future. And have them agree that whatever dollars we spend will be eligible as match, should they ever get funded and come back to do that work. And so if we set $500,000 aside, and we decided we wanted to pursue the trail project, we could spend it out of that reserve figure, and with the knowledge that it would be eligible for a match in the future. You're raising the question of whether you want to think you're raising the question, whether you want to view the capital account as a reserve account. That's what. And so if you never diminish it, it becomes part of our capital reserve, which is not a bad thing.
Please refresh my memory and stuff on the cost, you know, with the core, not the flood mitigation, because that's a whole different thing, but the whole trail and the parking lot and.
We don't have a cost estimate.
I thought we had an estimate.
Well, the trail, the trail is separate from the parking lot. The parking is part of the habitat restoration project.
Right.
That Sandra's been working on and attracting grant funds to do that. Now, it's complementary, the two activities, but they're independent in terms of their financing and planning path.
But we don't have an estimate on the trail? Not even a rough figure?
I haven't thrown them together. But my estimate's going to be, isn't going to be the issue. It's the core's estimate.
Right.
Well, I.
Still just shooting in the dark.
Exactly. It's so vague, and that makes me very uneasy, you know?
Remember, the original, there's money there right now to handle a $12 million-plus core project. And their estimate came back, it's two.
Your recollection's as good as mine.
Which 25% of that would be $500,000 total, then we got 3.1 million.
And we also, the core thing aside, we definitely have $200,000 in general revenue that we can spend right now. So there are things on here, aside from the core stuff, why don't we just do?
Right.
You know, some of these overlays, the Ninth Street, the Third Street.
Yeah.
And Lynn, we're still under the $200,000 there. We can get that stuff, get that done, and get progress towards getting some of these streets fixed up.
Right.
While we're waiting for the core to decide whatever it is they're going to do.
I don't have a problem with that.
And also, let's go ahead and do Market to Jefferson, too, for $22,000, is that what you had?
Yeah.
Get that done, too.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'd say we stay under that $200,000 or right at it, and use it, and get going on it. I don't know how long this will take, the process, to, you know, it's like anything else, it's going to take a while, and we've got a lot of business owners and everything else.
Sure.
You know, appropriate time to do it, you know? I'm in agreement with everybody to get started on some of that.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
I'd just like to, I think the Ninth Street, I think we ought to think about that, because the issue with Ninth Street, I don't think is an overlay. I think the issue with Ninth Street is congestion and just the use of Ninth Street.
I agree.
To do Ninth Street correctly, we need to probably buy some people out and make it wider and more lap.
Yeah.
Before we spend the money on Ninth Street, I think we ought to revisit the issue. We paid for this study on the Maple Street extension. I think we ought to get the school district and the county and Mississippi Lime involved again, and see if that is a better option than what Maple Street, than what Ninth Street is. I think that's a better answer, and I think before we commit to Ninth Street, we would have a little part of the Maple Street, a very small part of it, but most of it's in the county.
Where were we on that, Dick, when we had got all these people together to talk about that? How far did we get on that?
Well, we ended up, Martin ended up getting a rough study done, and it came back, and we did have a cost. That's where we, that's where the last meeting was. We left it was, they all wanted to see, well, what's it going to cost? And that's where we were at.
Mississippi Lime wanted to see where it was going to go.
Where it was going to go, and they're.
That's what this is.
And those figures were what, 1.3 million on asphalt?
A million four asphalt, and a million seven if you do it concrete.
My question with that whole Maple Street extension and stuff is, what are you going to do when a tractor trailer comes off of 61, comes down there, and ends up as Ninth Street? Where's he going to go? There's no place for him to go. Bring him all the way through town? You go to Washington?
But what do you do to, I mean, I don't, again, a tractor trailer, I think, is certainly a, maybe an issue, but what about, I mean, we've got this infrastructure that, with the streets, that is 100 years old, and back even 30 years ago, maybe this, I mean, if you looked at the school district as, say there was a business there, it was a business and not a school, and 30 years ago, you had 100 cars going to that business, and now you've got 400, 500 cars going to that business, would we, just like we did, we passed the ordinance for the concern we had over the care center and the traffic that it put on Chadwell? Well, look what has happened over the years to that, just because of the campus growing and extensions and everything, and the population of the campus growing. The infrastructure didn't keep up with the campus growing. And, I mean, we put an ordinance into effect from here on out, as far as if a business grows, or, and if affects a street plan, then, you know, a study has to be done. Well, I mean, we're really in the same position there, and we've got an infrastructure that can't handle the volume of traffic that goes to the school. I think that's a.
Well, I mean, in regards to your concern, couldn't we just put up some major signage that says, you know, no semi trucks? I mean, I agree, it's a valid concern.
Right.
But I'm just saying, I see Dick's point.
Right. And I do, too, but after living up there for 62 years, and I have made a point, after I got on the board, to sit up there and watch the traffic flow. It's 45 minutes in the morning, and it's a little more spaced out of an evening, and it's nine months out of the year. You know, it is an issue and stuff, and it's primarily an issue and stuff when the buses come out and other people try to go the opposite direction and stuff, but, I mean, I realize it would make an egress in or out of there, but, I don't know. And who pays for the $1.3 million?
That's the ultimate question.
That's why we're not done, that's why we don't have the road in.
Right. You can't pay for it.
So we might be talking this a year from now.
Okay.
A lot of entities are involved, the counties involved, and I'm not saying it's, I think it's a pretty good idea.
I think if you could get, if you can get that solidified, as far as how we're going to pay for it, I'm all about it.
Yeah.
There is tractor trailers up there once in a while. It's rare, but, and they come back out. I don't know how they do, and I wonder about it myself.
I backed a few of them out of there instead of trusting it.
Oh, yeah. They're, they're, they get around.
They get lost.
They get lost.
And GPS leaves them astray.
Buses, too. They do. There you are. People from other districts coming in.
I agree with Dick. I think we need to hold off on the Ninth Street.
Did you have?
I don't live that long to see that road happen either, but.
Yeah. Plus, did you have something together of what you thought our cost might be, just on our portion of it?
Well, you got that, there's one, basically one lot to get to the county, to get to the city limits line. Now, that, that may or may not be a problem with that particular owner of that lot, but.
It'll be a problem.
I, I don't know that we had a number, did we?
But it's a couple hundred feet.
Couple hundred feet.
What was that, man? I mean. Sorry.
Couple hundred feet.
For what?
To, for our part of that road, you know, to get to the.
Just the length of that lot.
To get to the county line.
Oh, oh, okay. But I agree, it wouldn't make sense to spend all kinds of money on Ninth Street if we didn't alleviate a lot of the problem by doing that. Because Ninth Street should have, I mean, to do it right, because we had people in here a couple of years ago, you need a side, you should have a sidewalk.
Ninth Street needs to be done anyway, either way. It needs, something needs to be done with it.
But to what extent? To what extent? That's, there lies the question.
So I'm going to put together a bid for Third Street overlay, Lynn, North Lynn, and Fourth Street, and I'm going to do it as a single bid package for all three projects.
How about Market to Jefferson? You going to put that in, overlay on that?
Fourth Street.
Fourth.
Mark, yeah.
Okay. Yeah.
And I'll get that, we'll get that work done in the next 60 days or so, hopefully. And then we'll revisit.
I guess you're right.
The other $400,000 worth of project, when, as Paul said to me earlier, he said, "I'd like to have a city attorney who's part of the decision-making process when we spend this capital improvement money to make sure everybody's on the same page."
Yeah. I agree.
Okay. We had a new store opening, and I don't always bring this to your attention, but Alderman Prince and I attended the ribbon cutting for the Belle Ever After boutique, and the significance of this is, you hear all the time.
Did you buy anything?
Kept looking for the Men's Department. And people saying, "I can't buy a whatever in St. Genevieve, and here's a women's clothing store that has whatever."
Fantastic. That's really neat how they transformed that building, too. Turned out pretty nice.
We met with the MERS organization, Gary and I, because they have some folks that they give training to on how to interview and have a job and whatever, and they were wondering if we had a place for them. And so we met, and Gary and I agreed to take three of those people for summer help. We always have the disadvantaged group doing work that Gary has spoken highly of. So we're getting a lot of curb painting and things done that these people can do, freeing up our folks for the work.
I think an important part of that, too, is using these young people. Gary's got an opportunity to mentor some, mentor some young people that, he's going to teach them some good work ethic and skills. So I think it's just a win-win situation. And this MERS business, they don't cost, they're paying them, you know, everything, work kind of, believe.
Yeah, we have no cost to the.
There's no cost to us at all.
Here's a brush.
Yeah.
I promised you I'd speak to the Special Road District if we didn't hear any, not Special Road District, MoDOT if we didn't hear anything. I didn't hear anything, so I ended up talking to the district engineer, and he said, "Yes, they got the information, and they need more information on Chadwell Lane," and I anticipated that. And he was putting his guy in touch with Paul Arnold to get the additional information. And he said, "You know vacations?" And I said, "Yeah, yeah." So they're working on that.
But that money to do that was still, that's the 70-something thousand?
That's, we have 75,000, which were three payments that the Special Road District made to us, of 25,000 a piece sitting in an account, which we would be used to do that in cooperation with whatever the Special Road District can contribute this year.
Okay, coming off of Highway 61, and you're going down Chadwell Lane, are we going to have to buy some property for some people?
No.
Nothing at all?
Two things have to happen to make that a safe intersection. One is that you can't just drop off the highway, you know, and start down the hill the way it does. The grade's too steep. But even worse, when you're trying to go out on the highway, you know, you're on a steep grade and you can't see. So, and then it hits the highway at a weak angle. And so, depending on, you can't, you just don't have the sightlines to see if somebody's coming. So we need to fill and rig the grade up, so there's at least a two-car or three-car queuing area, so that they're sitting on a 2% slope instead of a 14% slope. And we need to put the, reroute the road so that it comes in at a 90-degree angle to the highway. The adjacent property owners who would be affected have both agreed, and we didn't talk, because I don't have figures of compensation, but I got the sense that they really, regardless, they're going to cooperate with us.
Answer to my question.
And we received a letter from the Council for the Home School Legal Defense Association. We put a copy of that letter in each of your boxes tonight, and it relates to, you didn't?
It's attached.
It's attached.
It's attached to the back of the ordinance.
And it relates to the ordinance you're looking at. Yeah. It's up to you to decide what, where you want to go with that. If you think those are reasonable requests, you know, we have to put them in. The only thing in that letter that I kind of have questions about, well, not that letter so much as the two or three or four that came after it.
Two or three or four you got that I sent you. I've been getting wore out by the homeschoolers here the last two days.
Was a statement that we can't do anything beyond what the state law allows, and I think we can't, we want to. We can't relieve people from the obligation to comply with the state statute, but we're not constrained from adopting our own additional regulations. But again, I, my reaction to those requests is irrelevant, but it's neutral. I didn't see a problem. That's it. Questions?
So what's the schools' take on that?
You'll have to ask the schools.
Go ahead, Matt.
She is here. Why don't we wait till we get to the ordinance?
Right. Yeah. You did get, John's giving that information?
Yes. And I went up and, yes, but we'll talk about it.
Sure. Is that it? Any questions for Martin? Okay, we'll go on to our staff reports. Gary, you're up first.
Before Gary speaks, under personal appearances, this request has been withdrawn.
Okay.
Eric and Sandra have, were the representatives from the, and they've worked out an alternative that seems to be satisfactory to everyone concerned.
Yes.
Yeah.
It's been hot.
It's been good, eh?
Yeah. Been doing a lot of moment, weeding, trying to spray weeds. We installed a stop signs to make the four-way stop at Memorial and Roberts. We got the drinking fountains repaired at the skateboard park and at Valley Spring Park. We cut up that big tree at the old cemetery. We put riprap in the storm drain at Jefferson and Seventh, and I'm working with somebody on some ground cover in there to keep the banks from washing, so we'll proceed with that. We got some dirt from the county out by the community center. They gave us several truckloads, and we filled some low spots down at Pinkley Park and a couple of other places around town, and got them seeded and strawed. We did some asphalt patching, running around, cutting the low line, low-hanging tree limbs when we get complaints on them. We got part of our fence, we got the fence built in the front of the shop, we're just working on the gates now, trying to make a rolling gate to make it easier to open and close. We're caught up with the water department on patchwork. And we've been cleaning up debris from illegal dumping at the brush site. We're up to, I think, five or six place, people that's been ticketed, and if they don't come clean up the mess, then they get charged our disposal fee and our time.
Are we buying beach people right now?
Mm-hmm.
That's what it, that's what it is.
Yep. It's five or six now that we're up to.
That's great.
I'm, go ahead.
And this is in regards to the restrooms at the park on the north end by Yanks Field, which is the man's room, is refurbishing those, is that something that would have to come before this board, or how, how could we go about scrucin' those up? They are rough.
Yeah.
My first time I was ever in them was on the port, and it really needed attention, and I'm not blaming you, I'm just, I know you've got a lot to do, but I'm just saying, is there any way we can have-
In the past, it was an issue of, is it worth spending the money, because we had so much vandalism with them.
Yeah.
And this year's, we haven't had any problems anywhere with vandalism.
Right. If we could just, I'm not talking about rebuild, well, you never know till you get in it.
Right. Yeah, there ain't, I mean, there's not a whole lot to do, they're a block brick building and-
Yeah, I mean, maybe-
Whole thing?
Fix the door handles, paint the doors, stop the leaks, I mean, when I was in there, it was, it was water running everywhere, I don't know if that was just that night, but, you know.
Yeah, well, you haven't had any problems, so.
All right, well, maybe it was just that, because of the high volume of people there. Anyway, um, in your spare time, maybe look into that.
The grass has slowed down, so.
Yeah.
Before Gary leaves, uh, they discovered that the, uh, South Creek is meandering, as creeks will do.
Yeah.
And it's, it's incisions kind of on this bank, and it's caused the bank to slow off for the parking lot, the guardrails over here. So, they worked today getting out trees that were just, they'd lost their roots, but they were just hanging in them by other trees, so they cleared all that out, we're gonna have to move the guardrail, and we're gonna kinda riprap the bank, try, try and stabilize it, but it's, uh, it's pretty, pretty impressive when you look over it.
Always something.
Yeah. We don't lose that nice new building over here. It's all right.
A question for Gary, and stuff up on Chadwell Lane, just south of the entrance to the nursing home, and even along the edges, there's a big hunk of concrete, somebody's dumped out there, there's some tree limbs, and in quite a few places along the edge of the road, there's pretty good, any chance to get up there?
Yeah.
I'm not talking about down at the bottom, because that's a good-
They're in return right there mostly, yeah.
Leave that rough down at the bottom, because I'm telling you, that slows people down.
So, you're saying somebody's dumped concrete up there?
That's what they put the concrete in over there, the concrete truck, how they just ended it, they dumped the powder down.
They're, they're waste, they just-
Yeah, they just dumped it there.
That's right at the end.
Right along the edge of the road, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Anything else?
Anybody else?
Yeah, I just wanted, uh, had assistance, say what a great job they did with that tree, Mr. Fisher dropped it, right, and he said there was no issues with any of the headstones or anything in there that-
We got everything out there successfully.
It was pretty, pretty impressive the way they took care of-
It's a big tree.
Yeah, oh, what was the base of that, that crow?
At least forty-eight inches.
Wow, it was a big, big tree, so.
How tall was it? Probably-
Probably eighty, ninety foot tall.
Wow.
Yeah.
It was eighty, eighty or ninety foot high.
They get bigger when they're on the ground, did you ever notice that?
They get wider, not taller.
Gary, are we working on the pond?
Working on the pond. Now, we got the fountain starting to spray up, we're getting a little water movement, so we did some-
That fountain's above water now.
Yeah.
But the-
Doesn't seem like there's a lot of power in that fountain.
I'm not sure everybody knows what the solution you, you finally ended up on is.
We're gonna put some copper sulfate on it, which will kill the moss, but it'll still be good to the habitat around there.
It won't kill the duck, will it?
No, it won't kill the duck.
I'm talking about the fountain solution.
Oh, we're gonna, once we get the, the water level gets down, we're gonna raise the head of the fountain a couple feet and put, drill in the side so it squirts out the side, too, when it's sticking out of water that far, so you don't, the heads aren't as noticeable.
Is that concrete strong enough to do that?
Yeah.
There you go.
Thank you very much, sir.
Hey.
Hello, Gary.
Thank you.
Hey, Gary, good job.
Thanks. Carl, you're up next.
Good evening. Okay, so, um, on my staff report here, it's, it's pretty, pretty simple, the, um, a couple of things that I did want to, to add on here, if you look down near the bottom, a minor subdivision request has been submitted by Rick and Lori Figgy, it, it'll be later on the agenda, um, for the ordinance, I'd like to request consideration for a second reading, uh, for, so that they can begin moving on the project, so, just, there's that, um, and then yesterday, Officer Crump and I were discussing a question that he had been asked regarding the, the new ordinance on trailers on the street, and so we talked to Martin, you know, briefly about it, on the new ordinance, in Section B, it discusses the parking of boats, trailers, recreational vehicles, and then it has a, it, there's a section where it doesn't apply to RVs and motorhomes, but it only doesn't apply to RVs and motorhomes for visitors that are not owners of the RVs. So, the question that was asked to him is, well, there's, there's one parked, you know, in town, been there for years, you know, in the street in front of a house, and is there, do you, do you want me to look at, and Martin to look at revising this based on the width of the street? Because there's some, there's some driveways that people cannot back their RV into, you know, do you wanna look at, can, you know, just consider the, the possibility of modifying this for, for RVs and motorhomes, or is this something that you want to just leave it as it stands?
Sounds like we need to revisit it.
Yeah, it does.
I mean, and, and Martin's suggestion, when we talked about it, was to possibly have a consideration of the, if the motorhome is parked there, because it can't be parked in, in the driveway of the homeowner, as long as the street's wide enough for two lanes of traffic to get through. Otherwise, and all, you know, alternative storage method, you know, measures would, would have to happen, so.
And that would be in regards to a motorhome?
Oh, motorhomes and RVs, like drivable.
Drivable type, okay.
Yes, yes, not, not campers.
Not camper trailers or anything?
No.
We've already got that handled.
Those are all covered in this, um, this is strictly, you know, regarding like RVs and motorhomes that you would drive.
Where is the one located at?
On Westwood. At Market.
Oh, I know the one you're talking about.
It's been there for years.
And it goes there for a while, and then it comes back.
Is this for sale? Got it for sale, so I don't know.
Matter of fact, when it's not there, sometimes it's real easy to miss that street.
Yeah, that's true.
And I'm not asking you, I'm just saying, that's the, that's the landmark.
That's true, right, right.
Yeah.
So, something to think about if you, um, if you'd like, you know, to revisit that, that section of the, of the ordinance.
You could do it two ways, you could adopt a standard, you know, that one that you just mentioned, or we could make it something that requires a permit.
Right.
And you'd have to come in and demonstrate the need and the adequate width of the road.
Right.
I like that, I-
I, I kinda like that, yeah.
Claims things up a lot.
Sure, absolutely. Okay.
Have there been complaints? I take it there's complaints about that?
Um, Officer Crump had stated that he had been questioned about, why is it okay for this vehicle to be parked here, but it, it doesn't go along with the, with the ordinance?
Well, I would think, I guess it depends on how you interpret things, but if it's large enough that it creates a safety hazard where you can't see-
Around it.
Either to turn in or turn out, we probably already got that covered.
Which, it, it should be parked at least twenty feet away from the intersection anyways.
Right.
So, so, I'll look at that and bring it back, so, um, that's pretty well all I have to say, yeah, Rick?
I, uh, think that we need to start looking at an ordinance for fences around St. Genevieve.
Okay.
There's one that's put up right now that just absolutely pitiful.
Okay.
Yeah. We'd just, I'd just- We'd like to see an ordinance on this, Martin, would that be a problem?
About that?
No, I mean, you wanna require that they be made of certain materials?
Yeah. Certain highs, certain details.
Well, we only govern, we only, the building code only covers fences that are above six feet.
Six foot, correct.
So, anything below six feet, we don't, we don't regulate.
Unless, that's something that, that was when the, when the new code was adopted for 2012, that was something that was not modified, you know.
And that's the way it always was, right?
Um-
Pretty much?
Yeah.
I think so, yeah.
It's not considered a structure until it's-
Until it's over that.
Uh, but you, yeah, no, we can look into it and-
I would like to. I'm just afraid that's gonna continue.
Think about language, but-
So, we don't restrict as far as, uh, property lines and how close they can be to-
Building code, well, you can't build on somebody else's property, you can build right up to your property line with a fence, because it's not a structure.
Right.
Now, even if it got to be six feet, would, would, you can build a fence on your property line, it's not advisable, but can't make you- We had a meeting today of the, who, of the interim prosecuting attorney and the court staff, Carla was not in attendance, Alden Prince was, and the judge said, "You know, we just haven't had many weed cases this year." And I concluded that's because Carla's doing an excellent job, getting these things resolved without having to go to court, so thank you.
They're doing a good job.
Thank you.
Thank you, Carl.
Thanks, Carl.
Good evening, everyone. Just kinda going through my report, the first thing is, uh, the fact that we finally slowed down a little bit, uh, we've been averaging twenty-plus calls a month, and we only had fourteen in the month of June, which was a nice change of pace for us. Uh, under apparatus and equipment, we got our last two sets of turnout gear in, and that closed out the insurance adjustment we had from the year that was damaged, uh, the fire we went to. We got our rescue truck back today that has the last of the air system put on it from the AFG grant that we had gotten, and then we also, uh, had our discussions with the chiefs on the AFG money that was left over after we spent all the almost million dollars, and we got a letter the other day that allowed us to spend every last dime that we had, so we're getting a few miscellaneous air bottles and batteries and things like that to supplement that AFG grant that we had. The, uh, 2016 grant, I haven't heard anything, so it's one of those things, no news is good news, because we haven't been kicked out yet. Uh, at the last meeting, we approved the hydraulic cutter that has been purchased and is in service on the truck now, the supply air system has been ordered, it'll be a few weeks before that gets in service. And the last thing that I'd like to bring to your attention is, this month's firefighter of the month, uh, is Buck Yoker, he's spent thirty-three years with our fire department so far, and obviously, he's been an all-remember, and he's been board member for everything else, so he does a wonderful job.
Thank you for your-
I'm humbled, I just, I tell you, you know, just to be, just to be part of the, the crew there is something that's, it's special, there's no doubt about it, you know?
We're good with your guys.
Yeah, we got a, we got a bunch of new guys there, I know they're really enhancing our, our, our clientele also, and I very appreciate you, Mayor Chief. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. I have a question, um, and this ties in what I was talking about earlier, I can't speak for the rest of you, personally, I'm all for you getting fired, so don't take what I said earlier as being insensitive, but I remember back when we had our meetings, you know, a couple of years ago, when we were talking about all this, there was some talk, and it's been brought up again, about maybe approaching Mississippi Lime and some of the other people who rely on our services to help, is any of that, have we gone any farther with any of that as far as paying for it?
Not, not from our end of it, of being the fact that we're-
And I'm not saying it is your job, I'm just asking-
Not to my knowledge, we have not.
Okay, all right, because that would be, you know, I wanna see ways, creative ways where we can pay for this and, you know, ease the cost of it.
Yeah.
You know?
We wouldn't be opposed to that.
Yeah.
The problem with us being volunteers and full-time jobs and everything, I don't know that my guys would have time to go out and solicit.
Yeah, and I don't even know how you go about it, but I know it was floated once, so, you know, maybe, I don't know.
Is this something that we can form a committee, um-
Yeah.
I'd be happy to serve.
I think on the finance part of it, the committee would need to come from the city, we will-
Okay.
We will help with it, but it, it, honestly, it's, I don't think it's my place as the fire chief to go try to find the funding for things like that, so-
Okay.
We, we could assist with it, or lend some-
Sure.
Creditability to it, or whatever we can do to help it.
Like, it's a great idea.
Yeah, okay, just asking.
I would like to say, I, you respected the board's decision to, to maybe hold off on it, and we'll do whatever the board wants.
Okay.
Uh, the, one thing I will say is, the contract that's on the table right now is good for thirty days, so I cannot guarantee that sixty days or ninety days that we're gonna get that same price. If the board decides to go through with it at that point, then we'll have to go back out and double-check to make sure there's no changes in prices. Uh, while this was going on, I was texting the sales rep, and he's not aware of any incoming price changes, but there's no guarantees.
Okay, EOL, that's, that's a given, yeah.
I just got one quick question on, uh, as we talked before on the radio issues and all that stuff, uh, they got the new CAD system, and it says radios and pagers are working as they're supposed to, but is that good enough, are you happy, I mean, does that make sense?
Yeah, uh, the radio system itself is working fine, and matter of fact, they've made a bunch of improvements in the county, we are now a hundred percent wireless, there's no more telephone lines to be cut, or interference from water getting in lines, things like that, so that's working great. Uh, right now, they're in some growing pains because they've switched to a new CAD system, so we also have what we call Active 901, which is a phone app that gives it to us as a backup system, that's not functioning quite right yet because of the electronics involved in it, and, uh, the tech, text casters, and they send us a fax with the, the locations of calls at times, that stuff's not ironed out yet, they're getting there, uh, we had a chief's meeting over in St. Francis County the other night, and they're working hard on it, and they're saying, hopefully, within the next sixty to ninety days, I'll have all that completely ironed out. As far as radio communications, everything's going great, our pagers are working like they should, so we're not missing any calls, it's just the auxiliary stuff that goes with the dispatch system that's giving us a little bit of pressure right now.
You're optimistic and confident that they'll get it done?
Yeah, a hundred percent confident, uh, there's actually potential that there might be some additional things incoming that we weren't expecting to, there might be some iPads and things like that that might be able to go with our trucks, furnished by them, and some other things that they're potentially supplying in addition to, once they get the bugs ironed out. Do you have questions?
This discount that we were talking about on the fire truck, that's not gonna go away either with a little time?
It should, the way it's been explained to me is, that's kinda like a way to get some funding back if somebody canceled on the contract, I don't understand a hundred percent how that all works, but as long as we make the payments and we're getting there, we should still have the contract, the way it was written, and still get the discounts, the discount should stay there.
Is that an issue with us paying in advance?
It's progress payments, it's not, no money got fun, it's money as a late circumstantial progress and stuff.
I consider that.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Chief.
Committee reports, uh, we're, I've been going to a lot of committee meetings, and man, I've really realized and learned that this city runs with a lot of volunteers and a lot of committees, uh, we are, and tonight, we're gonna appoint quite a few people to some committees, uh, still need people, uh, we need a few people on the board, park board, uh, Carla needs somebody on the housing authority, uh, there's some criteria, that one's a little bit difficult, but the park board, not so much, but, uh, I think we got our tourism, our TTC and our TAC, we're, we're right where we need to be, we're gonna have a meeting next week, uh, so, looking forward to that, so, other than that, I don't have anything else for committees. Please be in the public comments, Carl, you'd like to speak?
Yeah, I hope I could.
Yeah, I hope I could.
Hi, City Minister. Mayor, City Minister, members of the board. My name is Carl. We enter at 11:58 by the spring track. Hi, neighbor. I ain't going to say too much. I ain't going to get on the fire truck deal tonight. But what I'm wanting to do is make sure the money that you spend that goes for the levy, you better spend it cautiously. And talking about the core, hell's going to freeze over before you get any money. I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Carl.
Oh, Dick, you should speak up a little bit more. My hearing aids ain't working right.
I'll try to.
Brings us to the minutes from the last meeting. On June 22nd.
Motion to approve with the revision.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
Handing out the closed session. Motion to approve. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that takes us to, we're going to be appointing a lot of folks here, some resolutions here. The first one here is Resolution 2017-20, reappointing, it's Mark Buckeye, not John. We have Mark in the, I was going to say something in the minutes. We have him down in it, but it's, it's Mark Buckeye to the park board. Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
2017-21, appointing John Cannard to the St. Genevieve Park Board.
Move approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
2017-22, reappointing Jeff Ideman to the, Ideman, I'm sorry, to the St. Genevieve Planning and Zoning Commission. Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We get a harmony goal.
2017-23, resolution reappointing Bernie Egger to the St. Genevieve Board of Adjustments.
Move approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
2017-24, appointing Dee Jean Jokers to the St. Genevieve Board of Adjustments.
Move approval.
All in favor?
Aye.
2017-25, resolution appointing Tim Hunsel to the St. Genevieve Board of Judgment.
Motion to approve. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
2017-26, a resolution appointing Lawrence Myers to the St. Genevieve Tourism Tax Commission.
Move approval. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
2017-27, a resolution appointing Jan Grine to the St. Genevieve Tourism Tax Commission.
Move approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And 2017-28, a resolution appointing, appointing Casey Benner to the St. Genevieve Tourism Advisory Council. Motion to approve. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Takes us into old business. Moving right along.
No business like this.
All right, it brings us to bill number 4164. This will be the second reading, and this is the ordinance for the City of St. Genevieve, Missouri, amending Chapter 210, offenses, article offenses concerning minors, imperival responsibility. And I'm not quite ready to sew this up. I think with the homeschoolers weighing in, I think I'd like to.
You need to have another look at it, table this.
We've gone ahead a reading.
We had more.
We had a reading. Table the second reading.
Can table the second reading, okay.
But. What's going on? You need to specify why you're tabling it and to what time you want to reconsider or some condition.
I make a motion to table in light, or to give time and consideration to the concerns brought forth by the Homeschooling Association, and also to give our new city attorney a chance to look at it and everything that's been presented and possibly redraft this for consideration.
So it's, you're tabling it to tell the attorney as an opportunity to review it and make a recommendation to him.
Correct. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Was there anything in that correspondence of homeschooling people objectionable?
Uh, just, I mean, not objectionable.
In terms of changes and things.
The letter from Mark Woodruff, I thought, addressed pretty much all the concerns that the individual letters do, in a better way than the individual letters do. And plus, I think he was the only attorney out of the bunch. So between what he's proposing and what the school district's proposing, if our new city administrator, our city attorney can look at them and come up with a happy solution that both of them are, I don't know that the school district has a problem with anything.
Now, did they have time to hear from the school?
Yes.
I'm the only one from the school district.
That's okay.
But we've talked. And Mr. Mooney had forwarded a copy of the email from the homeschool attorney to Dr. Fleg and Dr. Lindsay and I, and we all looked over it, and, I mean, we're kind of the same way you are. We didn't have any objections with what he said. I kind of went through the ordinance that Mr. Elpers drafted up to see, you know, what he was talking about, and, I mean, honestly, it all makes sense. You know, there's just a few things, you know, for example, adding the ordinance about earning 16 credits. And a lot of the stuff that I found the homeschool attorney had brought up in his email came from the state statute. So he was pulling a lot of that, saying this needs to be added from the state statute, and this needs to be added, and this needs to be added. So I, I agree with all of that.
And he did, I got a response back from him that he had, his second point in his email here, that he had withdrawn that concern, the thing about the enrolling a child in the program of home instruction. He, he seemed to be okay with that terminology now.
And that particular word comes, wording comes from the state statute.
Right, and I think that's why, I think maybe he read the state statute and said, well, it's there already.
Yes.
I, personally, I, I think it's interesting. We've heard from a lot of, outside of St. Genevieve homeschool interests. I would be interested in hearing from some inside of St. Genevieve homeschool interests. I've received several emails from the St. Louis area regarding this, but I'd be more interested, I think, in hearing the people who this ordinance would actually affect the St. Genevieve homeschool.
We went through the same thing with the dog ordinance thing.
Yeah.
It all came in from outside.
I had one call from a city resident before we had the first reading, that's the one we commented on, the city resident. So you're saying I didn't get that email. You're saying we don't need to consider this second recommendation?
The second thing that I got, and I can pull it up real quick, is that, yeah, the second point.
Second point, I should have pulled that.
That he made.
Just pull it, somebody pull it.
Yeah, I'll send it to you.
But we want, we want to get this right, you know, and we're going to get it done before school starts. And we got, we got some time, and we want to just get it right. So I think it's the best thing to do.
Oh, yeah, we completely understand. So.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
No, I don't have anything else.
All right, we're going to look at bill, now this is the first reading of bill number 4165. This is an ordinance authorizing directing the city administrator of the City of St. Genevieve, Missouri, to execute a contract employing the Wedman Law Firm as city attorney. Y'all got to pack it, and I'll let Martin do the talking on this.
First of all, I'd like to recommend that you change that to the mayor instead of the city attorney. Although I think it's okay to do it that way. I feel a little comfortable with the mayor executing contracts.
Yeah.
This law firm represents either as, there are three people, four people in the firm, who specialize in municipal law. They are either prosecuting attorneys or city attorneys or several other local municipalities in the area. And we met with the chairman of the firm, what do you recall, the managing director, and. And he's quite knowledgeable. He, you know, he can keep current on the law. They attend all the training programs that are responsible. I've known him personally for, for a while. Never done business with him before, so I can't. But I think it's important that we're not hiring one person. We're hiring a firm, and the firm has multiple resources that relate to what we do. They're two women and two men, so it's a diverse group, which I think is significant. And I think Paul, I got really positive feelings from that.
I did, I really.
I've talked to, or tried to talk to three other attorneys. One said, no, I'm not interested, but why don't you talk to this guy? He was out of the country, and he was supposed to call me back. Another guy who Eric knows about said, you know, I just broke my hip, and I don't know how long it's going to be before I can go back to work. And so I think, all told, we ended up with the best one regardless, and I would recommend it personally.
I concur.
So this contract basically is going to be signed by Mark Bishop, so you refer to the firm. So will we see one of four attorneys or?
Here to see him.
We'll see Mark Bishop. He lives in, he lives in Festus. He'll be traveling here at our meetings.
But in, in his absence, we won't be a journey list as we have from time to time. The, the. And the fee is reasonable, and they don't charge us any travel time.
They don't?
No.
Okay.
That's good.
So $150 an hour for the time he's in the room.
Who makes the determination when he's in the room? I mean.
He started a meeting at 6:00.
No, I mean, when he's doing work. I mean, he'll send us a detailed bill, which we'll review like we always do, and make sure that the work items are things we know about and authorized, so it's just what she's really good at.
So he'll be at every meeting? That's what I'm kind of getting at.
Plus, he'll handle the other legal work that may not relate to a meeting.
Right, sure, yeah. Good city firm.
Well, we thought about and talked about the possibility of just having a one call. We just have to come to the meetings when we tell him.
Yeah, that's what I was getting at.
The point of that is that you lose kind of the continuity of knowing what's happened that brought you to the point that you need to get your attorney involved. And so. I, I think I agree with that. I think it's, the hardest thing for an attorney is when somebody comes to them. I have an attorney friend who said to me, he said, why does your boss only come to me after he's gotten into trouble? And I, I think that's the point, is you want him, you want him there.
Well, I agree with that. I was curious, because I know we kind of.
We thought about it. It just seemed like a good idea.
Yeah, they need to be up to speed on what's going on.
And again, this is his recommendation. It's advice and consent. So you have to just make a motion, giving your consent.
Motion to approve. I could, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, with that changing of the.
Changing against the mayor.
Mayor or contract. Yeah, okay.
And can I get a, can we get a second reading on that?
Time is of the essence on this, right?
It is.
Okay. Okay, well, I'll make a motion that we have a, for a second reading.
Second.
A roll call? All in favor?
Aye.
Now you have to do the second reading. That was just to approve the second reading.
Okay, very good. Sorry.
You got a reading, you got a second reading.
All right. You read the second reading.
An ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor of the City of St. Genevieve, Missouri, to execute a contract employing the Wedman Law Firm as city attorney. Second reading.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Alderman Grimmonshire?
Yes.
Alderman Mooney?
Yes.
Alderman Donovan?
Yes.
Alderman Jokers?
Yes.
Alderman Hook?
Yes.
Alderman Stupi?
Yes.
Alderman Prince?
Yes.
Alderman Rosika?
Yes.
Eight yes, zero no's. Bill number 4165, now becomes ordinance 4101.
Very much. Look at bill number 4166. This is the first reading. An ordinance accepting and approving the subdivision plat of Figgy Minor Subdivision, resub block five of the subdivision of U.S. Survey Number 272, Township 38 North, Range 9 East, and the fifth principal, Merritt Meridian of St. Genevieve, Missouri. This is the first reading. Any questions?
Move approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Do a second reading.
Make a motion. I'll make a motion for a second reading.
Second.
Let you read it this time.
An ordinance accepting and approving the subdivision plat of Figgy Minor Subdivision. They resub block five of the subdivision of U.S. Survey Number 272, Township 38 North, Range 9 East, and the fifth principal, Meridian of St. Genevieve, Missouri. Second reading.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Alderman Rosika?
Yes.
Alderman Prince?
Yes.
Alderman Stupi?
Yes.
Alderman Hook?
Yes.
Alderman Jokers?
Yeah.
Alderman Donovan?
Yes.
Alderman Mooney?
Yes.
Alderman Grimmonshire?
Yes.
Eight yes, zero no's. Bill number 4166 now becomes ordinance 4101.
Very good. Thank you. We got bill number 4167. This is an ordinance amending the City of St. Genevieve's Code of Ordinance, Chapters 300, general provisions, Section 3.10, definitions as set forth below.
This just defines what a UTV is, correct? It doesn't legalize anything driving anywhere. It just says.
That's the next rule.
Right, but this is what, this is, this right here is just saying, this is what we're saying a UTV is.
Yeah.
Okay, move to approve.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Do you have a second reading on that? Just one reading on that? On the approval of the, we're going to get into the ordinance.
Second readings are discouraged, but allow the time is of the essence, and I think it's just not something that they're, of ours is.
All right. Bill number 4168, an ordinance amending the City of St. Genevieve Code of Ordinance, Chapter 340, Melissa, Melissa, go ahead now. Miscellaneous driving rules by adding Section 3.40.250, operation of a UTV vehicle. First reading?
Move approval.
Second.
Do we have some discussion over this, or we just jump right into this?
I, I'd like to know.
Martin, did Daniel tell me to bring you anything?
Didn't every guy with the golf?
No, he didn't.
Doesn't this pretty much mirror the golf cart thing?
Oh, not really. I mean, there's similar elements to it.
It's similar, yeah.
I do have a question that I saw earlier. Oh, wait, that was on the scanner.
I tried to incorporate into this the issues that were raised as we've had these discussions, and my notes reflected them. But I mean, are you aware of something else that's important to you, or?
I like, I like.
Something that you don't like?
Okay, I do have a question on this one, that's right. UTV is operated by the owner, so if John owns one and I want to drive it, I'm not allowed?
Well, I'm not letting you drive my.
Well, I understand that. It's, it's got to be operated. It's got to be operated by the owner, according to this, correct?
Yeah. If you have the literal interpretation of this, you would say that, so we could change it to operate.
I don't know that that's a bad thing, restricting it to the person that owns it. Is that a bad thing? I hope so.
It might be a bit restrictive, in like the event, in case, you know, I had a lapse in judgment and let Joe drive my UTV. I mean, that would be my personal mistake to make, I think.
True.
Yeah, I agree, John.
Yeah.
I don't see where that's being going.
Yeah.
I'm not using...
But then again, where does the insurance pick up?
Well, the driver, the driver has to be insured regardless.
And the owner is liable either way.
The driver of the vehicle.
Right. Well, I mean, it's no different than the car, and if I drive the car, it's not...
Insurance is on the vehicle.
I don't know if that carries through. I mean, I have insurance on my UTV.
Well, a lot of these UTVs don't have to have insurance. They're not required by law to have insurance. Now, we're going to require them to have insurance.
My insurance would drive it on the city streets.
I, you know, I, yeah, I mean, that was not the intent of this, was not to limit it to owner operators, but that's...
That's the only problem I saw with it.
I'd like to ask, we got some guys here that own them, right? Ben Matt and Mike.
Yes, sir.
How do they do that with, you want to come up here?
Sure.
As far as the insurance and that, is right, the VIN number is on your car, saying that that... It's just like a car or a truck or whatever, right?
Car, truck, motorcycle.
Okay. I'm just curious about that. Now, that is on your UTV somewhere, if you got a glove box or wherever you keep that car?
Correct, yes.
So that would be there in the event that someone besides you was driving?
That's correct, yes.
So, if I was going to change that one, I would just say, "UTVs for which a permit has been obtained from the city clerk." Just take that owner language out altogether.
I agree with that.
Were we, I don't see anything in here or on the last thing that we just passed, determining whether it's a sport UTV or a UTV. Are we looking at that still, or...
That's the issue I have a lot with UTV.
I mean, to me, you know, it's, you're not going to permit a minivan differently from a Corvette in town. I mean, yeah, the Corvette can go really fast if it wants to, but it's still obligated to follow the same speed limits that the minivan does. And I don't know how you would define something as a sport versus a, I mean, the shape of it?
I'd start talking about engine size and muffler noise and, I don't know. I'm not saying it can't be done.
I agree with you. It's still, they still have to abide by the traffic laws or any other rules, so...
Whether what they can do or what they should, or will be doing.
I don't know that we need to complicate it any further than it is.
Well, a lot of these restrictions in itself, to me, is going to eliminate a bunch of the UTVs, you know, which don't have all of the safety features, the seat belts, the lights, the turn signals and stuff. But one question I have, so now our city clerk is going to collect this $15 fee and go out and have to inspect these vehicles to make sure they have all of the safety stuff?
Well, we've been doing that with the police department. She collects the money.
Right.
But they have to, they get their permit from the police department.
After office.
An officer expects it.
So an officer goes out and looks at it?
Unless you really want me to.
No, I was just clarifying that.
It still brings up, and I had, one of the people in my ward had asked me, "What about razors?"
Now what?
They're called razors. That's a sport UTV that I was asking.
Oh, okay, all right. I missed that one. Okay, sorry.
They're not exempt. They have to comply with the same rules everybody else does.
Because they have to have all the same stipulations, so...
So they can be written, okay.
Great. Thank you.
So do we need to move to approve with that change in Section A3? If so, I make that motion.
All set up?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? It's the first reading?
Okay.
All right. Bill number 4169, an ordinance of the city of St. Genevieve, authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Rosenbauer Minnesota LLC to build and purchase a ladder truck for the city of St. Genevieve Fire Department in amount not to exceed 727,000, zero, fifty-three.
Can I say something before you make that?
Sure.
In all respect, I would just like to say, if you, if you think about the Corps and the amount of... We've got $3.1 million sitting there. This is going to take 700,000.
2.8.
2.8, okay, okay, 2.8 also. So we're down to 2.1, 2.2, which would still, looking at the Corps' plan, looking at their estimate of $2 million, you can still, with $2 million, you've got an $8 million project, and a project that, when we had the public hearings, you had four people show up on a ridiculous plan. I just don't want to think that we're overreacting here to still have plenty of money. God, I mean, of whatever the Corps could come up with, based on, even if they were off by 100%, you're still, I, okay, I'm okay with putting back the street plans and not using the capital improvements and holding that money back, but I hate to see this project being held back. And again, as Mr. Weiner pointed out, it's hard telling when we might have an answer from the Corps.
Now, I, my concern is just that, I'm just always concerned about money, and I don't want us to get into a situation, not to keep beating it to death, but like we did on that other thing, where we were told we were right, and then it turned out we were wrong. I mean, if we get this attorney in there, and he ought to be able to look at this real quick and at least give us a second opinion...
I don't know how quick that will happen, Martin. I talked about that.
Yeah.
About the city, new city attorney looking at this. There'd be a lot of paperwork.
He's going to have to play catch-up. I can, you know, he's going to want to review all of the documentation for the levy district tax, levy tax, the ordinance that converted it to the capital improvements tax, and he's going to have to research the state statutes, and he's just, I mean, he can do it.
I'd rather do it now than come to somebody else doing it, and then it come back and biting us like the last...
You're basically getting a second opinion. You have an opinion from the firm, so when you've done that...
But we've had a second opinion on the last project too, and it came back and bit us. I mean, I just want to make sure when we do this, we do it right, and we don't have to pay for it a second time. I'm not against the idea of doing this. I want to make sure all our i's are dotted, t's are crossed, and just make sure it's 100% good to go.
I agree. It's a big expenditure.
It is.
But I'm absolutely in favor. My point on it is, if this city's going to progress, we talk about economic development, you know, there's things that businesses want to see, and, you know, one of them is protecting my business.
Right. And I... As to plan, I just want to make sure that our plan is on, you know, solid ground. I mean, I don't want any more surprises, and we need to just...
Yeah. I mean, I'm absolutely for doing this. I just, I don't see, and it's just my opinion, I don't see the problem of waiting just a little bit, just to make sure that we're, everything is on the up and up. So with that being said, you know, I, I'm going to make a motion to table this until we have further opinion, until we know where we are better with money. And I don't know what that date is, but I just feel that that's, that's my opinion, and that's the motion I'm making.
That's seconded. Same way around. Now, is there any way to expedite this to that lawyer and say, "This is your priority right now before you do anything at all"?
Maybe within next Tuesday, first things I talk to him about.
I got another priority that I need to take care of.
You can have two priorities.
You can have two priorities.
Have you talked to him about this already, in any...
That's issue, no.
That's issue. Does he have a level of experience in that?
He is very experienced in administrative law. This is different value now. He would never offer his services to give an opinion on the taxes exempt status of a bond. That's what these people, Gilmore Bell does. But Gilmore Bell wouldn't sit here and purport to represent our interest on many of the things that we do, because it's not their area of specialization. He can review it, he can talk. I'm sure he'll call Mark Graham. They'll have a conversation. And I think what we're asking is to, just to make sure that what Mark and Shannon Crayton have concluded is reasonable. And I think he should do that with the conversation. I don't think he's got to... But maybe he's going to want to say, "You know, I got to review everything." If all you're asking to do is confirm this decision, that's different from asking him to render a separate opinion. Fine. Yeah. We'll talk to him.
I have a motion, first and a second, for tabling. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
But the tabling, we haven't passed yet, but is not so much the legal opinion, although that's part of it. That's not going to delay us as much as waiting for the Corps to find the court, except, is that what you're looking for?
Well...
And I'll call them tomorrow and see if they can change it.
I would say top of the list is that it's legal.
Oh, wait a minute, there wasn't enough.
Okay.
And as far as the Corps goes, you know, we know what, how long that's been...
How long this has been going on already.
Right.
Okay.
I was satisfied with the legal advice that came from you today, so...
Well, it's four and four, correct?
Right.
Okay, so Dick, John, Buck, and Rick all voted no, correct?
Yeah.
So it's tie vote, four yes, four no.
It's your first tiebreaker?
First tiebreaker. I'm going to caution on the side of, I want to see, that's why I want to see some more paperwork. Just want to do that. I don't think it's going to make us or break us. I want to see this deal done, you know. Somehow, some way, I think we need to...
I was going to say, I'm in favor. I want to see it happen. I just want it done right.
Bill number 4170, this is an ordinance amending the city of St. Genevieve Code of Ordinances, Chapter 385, bicycles and motorized bicycles by adding the section 385.10, reading on motorized bicycle, additional passenger, and other requirements. This will be our first reading.
Question?
Question? Chief? Can you come up, please? Sorry.
On the penalty for violation part, if any person under 17 years of age violates any provision of this chapter in the purpose of a police officer, sent officer may expound the bicycle or motorized bicycle involved for a period not to exceed five days upon issuance of receipt of child riding at his owner's helmet or...
At whose cost. I don't see anything in here that violates the impoundment or telling them that two years of...
If they're in violation, it's going to be at their cost, I would imagine. I mean, we could specify that in the ordinance, but typically, our impoundments are not at our expense.
But normally, those are the wording. How would you normally impound something like that?
I'd have to see how it was written up in other ordinances for that. I understand we're not adopting Chapter 385. It's already in our code. We're adding 385.110 to that existing, to our existing code. I just attached it so you see, see what you're amending, what you're adding it to.
How do we typically handle those?
I couldn't hear you.
Should we have something in there?
Both question.
Well, that's a different section, I guess, that we separate it.
Or the question.
Yeah.
The question was, the cost of the impoundment, is that on the city or is that on the property owner?
That would be a decision of the judge. So any violation, whereas we could, if they get, they're going to come in and if we say we spent $50 on the impoundment, then they have that. So doesn't, don't you normally, when you impound, it goes to a...
It goes to a tow yard or somewhere, and they have to pay the tow yard to get it back. So typically, it's on the owner, the vehicle owner.
Right.
I think he's just asking if that needs to specify specifically, that that's at the owner's expense. That's not part of this bill. That would be a separate thing.
All right, that's all I was wondering when I saw that.
I'm still want to be on the record of, while I think helmets are a fantastic idea, I think everybody should wear one, I don't think we should require adults to wear them.
I agree.
Well, thank the chef for safety reasons. One person with a head injury.
I'm all for it for kids. I'm all for it for kids. I think that we're overstepping, overstepping our bounds by requiring adults to wear helmets.
I think the, the... I mean, I was, when I first talked about this, I, an approved bicycle helmet was what I was, under the impression would be. And that's what I was asked to bring up for the, under, well, they said under 21. We got a, what, under 18? As far, yeah, I'm not sure I'm on board with making everybody. I'm more along the lines of 21 or 18, under, you know, under that age being required to.
Let's vote on that. Go from there. Well, I heard both sides of the discussion when we had our meeting, and I just had to put one or the other in.
So is your question on the, why, the style of a helmet, or the requirements of the helmet?
Both. I had to do some research, because I had the same question. What is a helmet?
Right.
And then I found the reference to the标准, so I wanted to put it in there.
I mean, an approved bicycle helmet or approved motorcycle helmet? Because they're drastically different.
This standard is for motorized vehicles. This federal standard.
So a greater helmet than like a little bicycle helmet is what this is saying?
Requires cushioning and a suspension unit, what you think of when you think of a helmet.
Bicycle helmets have that.
Yeah, my kids are just kind of foam, foam with plastic on the outside.
Well, I think the thing to do right now is to, we got it out in front of us. Move vote on it.
Are you talking about taking out B altogether, John?
Or adding an age?
I would, I mean, my preference would be to add for operators under the age of 18.
I agree with that.
I would go with that also.
Me too.
And again, I'm not saying helmets aren't a good idea. I think everybody should wear a helmet. I think everybody should not smoke cigarettes.
Cigarettes?
But...
So you're making a motion to approve with that change?
Yes, I would make a motion to approve this...
Don't we have to vote on this the way it is?
No.
No, okay.
To approve this ordinance with the addition of helmet requirement under the age of 18. the age of 18, in section B.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, you got it. Anybody opposed?
Opposed.
We have one other item under other business, demolition permit request, Mr. John Carroll is requesting a demolition permit to remove the garage converted to a desk house located behind the house at 191 South Seventh Street. Motion to approve?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed?
I'd like to ask a question, though, with our last demolition request that we had, the property owner said, couldn't you put these demolition requests, like, earlier on the agenda, so the citizen, John's not here tonight, doesn't have to sit through everything in order to get their item taken care of, so in the future, with your consent, we're gonna put it under what you've come up with, personal appearances? So, we'll put demolition requests, or like items, under personal appearances, so they don't have to wait through the whole agenda to get, to get their answer.
Carla, have to be here for everyone?
Well, no. I mean, I'm gonna talk to our new attorney about some different ways of handling things. There's some things, like resolutions to appoint somebody to a commission, that you should put on a consent agenda, and somebody should be able to make a motion to approve the consent agenda without discussion. Just wipe those things out, because they're not controversial. Now, now, if somebody, if there's an item on there that a, a board member wants discussion, when you're approving the agenda, you move to take that item off the consent agenda and move it to the regular agenda. And then we're not gonna read everyone and go through all the...
And I have a question, and I know kind of what the answer is, the reason we have to vote on demolition permits is because that's what the ordinance is, but why do we really have to do that? If Carla approves it, I mean, if it, unless you have an issue with it, I can see a protest, somebody said, well, they said no, and here's my case, but if it fits the parameters of what's accepted, why does that even have to come before us? Other than the fact that that's written in the ordinance that way?
I was just gonna ask the same question, because I know we've had discussions in the past about that.
I proposed changing it once, and that, the board at that time decided they wanted to hear the, the cases.
I mean, I can see it under historical circumstances, there's some buildings we want to preserve and so on, but I would think if it doesn't fall into that, why couldn't we just...
Be an administrative act?
Yeah.
And, and, you know, and a lot of things too, there, there's obvious reasons why something needs to be demolished, and so those things can go through, just easily be handled and done. But again, some of the historic items, those items, I would, I would refer anyways, only because of the importance of the structure.
Well, they would have to go through Heritage Commission anyway, so...
That's correct. Well, no, not the way that the, the ordinance is written. My, my choice was to run, like the previous one that we had, that was my choice to run that through the Heritage Commission, because of the importance of the structure.
To, to, to look at it and say, does this require further consideration?
Right.
So, I would propose an amendment that makes it an administrative act, and then obligates us to report to you the permits that have been issued, so you know what, what's going on. It's after the fact, but...
Yeah, I'm all for anything that can streamline process.
Yeah.
We, we did change the ordinance, the historic, the preservation ordinance to change, before all demolitions had gone through Heritage Commission, that part did get changed.
That part did get changed, and now all demolitions come through administratively.
Okay.
But I have the option to refer to the Heritage Commission on certain structures.
But before, they had, within the city limits.
Before they had all of them, everything in city limits.
Right, but now it's just...
And now it's just historic destruction.
Carla, what are you monitoring, you know, when somebody demolishes something? I mean, are you demol, looking at hazardous material, disposal of...
Yes, to see what the items are that are, the structure's made of, also to make sure that the, the water, any sewer that may be connected, electric, everything has been disconnected properly and inspected.
You know, say this little building here underneath, whatever kind of siding on there is asbestos siding, you know, you're monitoring to see that those things are properly handled. Do you do inspections or...
We do inspections periodically, we work with the, I mean, there's not been a whole lot of them, but we work with the person who's tearing them down, either the owner or their contractor, to, you know, different steps.
One more question on demolition for Martin. The fellow that's gonna tear this tower down, I want to look at that thing and how tall it is, and where it can fall, and what it can fall on. What has he done, I mean, what expertise does he have?
Let Gary answer that question. Gary?
Yes.
Could you explain to the, the board why Brian Martinelli is qualified to take the tower down? Do you don't know?
No.
Well, he's done work for us before.
Oh, yeah, he's done a lot of work. He's got, he's got big equipment, big boom truck.
Took a nine hundred... He's worked for me, and he's taken trees down, and he's done other things like that. He has a hydraulic boom truck.
That's what he told me he was gonna go up.
He's licensed, he's insured.
He's going up and taking it down. He said that he's gonna try to get the, he's gonna get the top half down.
So, he can get all the way to the top?
Yeah, he's gonna get, yeah, that's what he told me when we talked about.
Because where does the city's property at their end and start?
Um, it's, it's actually on county property.
City's highway, county property. I think city property is just the water tower area up there, what's been seen.
Because it could fall on some...
Well, it's not, he's, he's not gonna, he's not gonna...
I think you always have that...
Take it off, put it down, take it off.
That's where you can hire someone that's insured, more than's...
Right.
Yeah, the guy that said, I'm just gonna take the guy wires down and cut the base off, was not the guy.
That's scary, that's scary.
I have a question for Carla about this demolition. Now, this is a slab underneath there, is that adequate to be left, left there?
They can leave the slab there if there's, if there's not a, you know, a basement or crawl space or something, I mean...
Right, I was just curious if it had to be back to grass or whatever.
No.
You know, this has been a problem property in the city for quite a while.
It has.
And John's buying it.
He's recently acquired this property.
Is a great boon to the, to the, to the neighborhood.
Yeah.
Yeah, they'd be glad, yeah.
Thank you, Carl.
Yes, he's, somebody clapping over there.
Any other communications you guys with us? I have one.
Yeah.
Motion to adjourn?
No, we got a poll session.
You gotta go into court session.
Eric, would you say for the poll session?
Yes, sir.
I need a motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Roll call, roll call.
Roll call.
Alderman Girminger?
Yes.
Alderman Mooney? Alderman Donovan?
Yes.
Alderman Jokers?
Yes.
Alderman Hook?
Yes.
Alderman Stupi?
Yes.
Alderman Prince?
Yes.
Alderman Rosika?
Yes.
Motion carries.